That started here in just one moment. Mr. Ferrara, you can take us out of the practice session if you want. For all the board members, the same as previous meetings, all the microphones are turned off. When you're ready to speak, please bring them, turn them on and bring them close to your mouth to speak. That's works best with the sound here in the room as far as, and also for the webinar recording that we have, the Zoom recording that we have. Dr. Morthe, we are ready to begin whenever you are.
All right. This meeting of the Mala Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be live streamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID is 812-5580-7374, and the required password is 922266. Call the meeting to order, Mr. Bleeker for roll call.
Ms. De Valera.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallup.
Here.
Mr. Kaczmarewski. Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Secon.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Student representative, Mr. Ryan Sanford.
Here.
And Dr. Morthe.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record, specifying that the Mala Board of Education will meet on December 21st, 2022, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mala, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag, Mr. Copeland, would you leave us please?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do require an executive session beginning today, so I do need a motion for us to recess to executive session to have the motion. Mr. Gallup, seconded by Mr. Copeland. All right, we will be about 15, 20 minutes for executive session, thank you.
I know what I'm dealing with then. Miss first right, doesn't it?
Sorry, Ryan.
Are you homework?
Huh?
Homework?
Yeah.
I don't, I didn't bring any.
Hello.
Hello.
Back. When we should get into a tree. Make sure Ryan gets one. Well.
Make sure Ryan gets one.
Yes, yes. Oh, let me get the grab on her. And is everyone, are we all going here? Yeah, Ty, you can give it to me later. Ryan's got baked goods in the back. It's like, it's a bonus day. If you're not allergic, do you have any allergies?
No.
You have no idea the stress behind it. Oh, hi. Nice to meet you in person. Well, thanks to me. Oh, there he is.
There he is.
I thought you were talking.
Yeah.
No worries. Okay, we've returned from our executive session. I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Gallo. Thank you. Now, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions and your new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, we are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Dr. Park. Okay, we are open to the public. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward on agenda questions. I need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Ms. Sacco, second by Mr. Denise. All right, Dr. Dittoro, superintendent's report.
Yes, I have, I have one thing. And I think it's extremely important, so I just wanted to take a couple of minutes. This is directed at Mr. Copeland. Obviously, I could go chapter and verse with all the different things that you've done for the district. Let me start off with a thank you, and I'm sure I'll end with a thank you. You know, you've served on the, on the board since 2020, I believe. You know, in those three years, you did a number of committees. Instructional, policy, community relations, schools foundation, liaison. I really wish that the community could, could really see the scope of the work that's done by the board. And obviously, you, Brett. The effort, the time, the dedication that you guys have for our kids to, to support us in making our district something that's a point of pride for our Mawa community is, is really a thankless job. It's my hope that the, that the validation and appreciation that you've received is looking at all the products that have been put forth from our district during your time here. But obviously, the, the efforts and the dedication and volunteering doesn't stop there. I know that there's a ton of things that you do for the community, specific to sports. And it's, it's very apropos that you take the time every board meeting to thank the volunteers and to get the word out about the exciting events that are happening in the community. It's my hope that you take a step back and understand that a lot of those events are taking place because of your support and your volunteering and your dedication to our kids. So our district wanted just to take a moment to say thank you for your service. We greatly appreciate all that you've done during your, your tenure here as, as a board member. And we got you a little something to remember your time with us. And it's our hope that we, our paths cross in the future in a number of different avenues. So I just wanted to hand this to you on behalf of our district.
Thank you, Dr. Dittoro, and Mr. Copeland. There'll be a few more words for you in just a bit. Next, business administrator, Mr. Bleeker, do you have a report for us this evening?
Uh, no, no report this evening. However, I want to echo absolutely everything that Dr. Dittoro said regarding Mr. Copeland. Once again, it was great working with you the last several years. Definitely look forward to our paths crossing again. I'm sure that they will. And to everyone in the board, members of the public, happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Bleeker. Dr. Fair, Assistant Superintendent, report.
I don't have a formal, formal report. I just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays. This break couldn't, couldn't come soon enough, right? So I think we're all ready. We're all ready. So I also want to thank Mr. Copeland. You've always been a good person. You've always been really supportive of the district. And I've always respected your yearn to connect the board with the community. So you'll leave that behind. So we appreciate that.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Fair. Okay, so my report, I have also very little today. So I'm just gonna wish everyone a happy holidays and a happy new year and stay healthy and well and enjoy all your time with your families. All right, board committee reports. Mr. Copeland, very apropos.
Um, I have two. First is with transportation, we met last week and we saw some eye-opening data. Put it politely, actually. And just to give everyone a quick update, the way transportation has worked is that we have an understanding of how many students are assigned to a bus or a route. In, in years past, we didn't really know how many actually used the so-called ridership. Our administration, the staff at all the schools have, have put a program together where they'll be counting actual ridership in the morning and in the afternoon of the students that are using it. It'll be done twice a month. And we have some preliminary data right now that they have that they'll be reviewing. I will say the numbers were pretty surprising when you saw them. The ridership is a very low number in the district. I think if you're stuck in traffic on Ridge Road, you probably knew that already. But to see it in black and white on a spreadsheet, it kind of opened up all of our eyes. And I'll give a really good roadmap for the committee as well as our administration to kind of look at it and, you know, see what changes can be made. I think that's, it's gonna be very interesting to see what happens with our transportation program moving forward having this data. So thank you to all the staff members that are doing it. It's not, it's not an easy task. They're literally counting every student going off the bus in the morning and every student going on the bus in the afternoon. So thank you for doing that. And thank you to Ms. Finler and Mr. Bleeker for taking it out. From a community connection end of things, very simple. Just wanted to wish our entire community a very happy Hanukkah, joys of Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We hope that everyone will be able to enjoy this precious time together during the holidays and over the break. And I just wanted to wish everyone 2023 filled with laughter, health, success, and broken happiness. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Any other board committee reports? Mr. Denise, policies?
Briefly, the policy has three policies on the basis of the first meeting. Again, these were just a part of the review of the 3,000 series. Just minor punctuation for amount of changes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denise. I think we have a report from Ms. Davenira. Excellent.
Bear with me for one second. For Access for All, we had a meeting recently. Dr. Dittoro, Mrs. Rizzo, and Mr. Bleeker sat down and met with members from the Access All for All Committee uptown. And we just talked a little bit about how we can work together. Access for All serves such a specific portion of our population, and we definitely have that population in our schools. So how do we bridge that gap between the two? Right now, the Access for All team is creating kind of a welcome packet and about us that will be distributed to Ms. Rizzo. And then she will distribute that out to the appropriate population at the schools. Just kind of a, this is what we do, this is what we can offer. Really just supplemental outside of school. So when we talk about the entire student and we talk about Mawa connects, like it really just develops that program a little bit more. So how are we supporting our, all of our student population inside and outside of the building? They have a lot of great events that are held townwide. Right now, the average age that's attending those events is older, right? So we're looking at 19, 20, 21. How do we bring that average age down? Like, how do we really get into our student population also so that they can take advantage? So it's just the start of a really good conversation. I really, really appreciate the district being open and wanting to hear what they had to say. And, you know, how do we continue to build that going into 2023? So more to come in January, but it's a really great start for now.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Davenira. All right, Mr. Thompson, do you have a report for us? Stanford, do you have a report for us? I'm sorry, Ryan. Stick with Ryan. Ryan, do you have a report for us?
Yes. Oh, my mic. You're good. Got it. So some stuff that's been going on in the past couple of weeks and coming up soon before break is on the date of our last meeting, there was some Gifting Calhoun kids that came from both JK and The Ridge. And they worked with our mock trial team. They did some sample cases and they started their own cases. And they're all just exploring law and logic. And it was a great success. And we want to thank all the library and Gifting Calhoun staff for that. Tomorrow is our senior elfing, which is, it's just a great thing every year. It's gonna be the senior executive board and class officers as well as 30 other seniors who have signed up. We go around to Betty Ross, Lenifu Meadows, GW, JK. And we sing Christmas carols to all of them. And it's just, it's a lot of fun every year. It's really festive. The winter concert was last night. Student performers did great and all the music teachers, it was, it was wonderful. Winter sports are up and running with practices and competitions working on their full force. The music ensemble groups are going to be playing tomorrow morning in the high school to welcome students with some holiday music and to start the day off right. The Action Tour Athletics is gonna be selling shirts for their second annual Marcus Cale game. So all proceeds from the shirts as well as attendance to the game is gonna go to the Marcus Cale Memorial Scholarship. And there's gonna be more details on that soon with an email. Students in Spanish four classes donated toys to a PBA toy drive last week. And we were able to raise a lot of toys for that initiative. Holiday band students are gonna be going to nursing homes to play some holiday music for them. Last weekend, they went to St. Joseph's Adult Home. And just another great way that we're spending holidays here. And our final holiday gift to, I guess, the high school and the district is that grades six through 12 are gonna be no homework as a part of our wellness and mindfulness initiative. And I, as well as all my peers, are pretty excited about that. I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and I'll see you guys next year.
Thank you for the reports.
Thank you very much. Sure, Dr. Dittoro would like to jump in.
There was one thing I left off of my, my report, which is extremely important to share. We have a celebrity on the dais. Ryan just received from the county clerk a five-star student award for his creation of a program. Let me just very briefly tell you about the program. It's absolutely incredible. It's something I'm very proud of. Ryan Stanford has a passion for helping others. As one of the leaders of the Mawa High School Habitat for Humanity Club, Ryan created the idea for a beautiful fundraiser that has changed the community of Mawa. This fundraiser is called Snow Angels, and it consists of students who shovel snow for senior citizens in the Mawa community. Ryan not only created this fundraiser, but he makes sure that every senior citizen who asks for help is taken care of. Mrs. Kazinski, a high school teacher, receives numerous phone calls from Mawa community members complimenting Ryan's kindness and hard work. Senior citizens in Mawa gave Ryan's program the name "Snow Angels." They say that Ryan and his friends are their angels. Ryan made this program into a Habitat for Humanity fundraiser as any senior citizen who offers to pay for the snow shoveling service is encouraged to make a check out to the Habitat for Humanity. We were able to give the Habitat for Humanity organization over $500 last year. Mrs. Kazinski states Ryan has exhibited initiative, sound judgment, and a strong will to succeed in all aspects of his life. He represents himself and the Mawa High School District with pride, integrity, confidence, and style, as you can see by his style today. Ryan truly impresses me with the way he conducts himself. He is one of the finest young men that, and it is the pleasure to associate with. The town of Mawa is truly a better place because of Ryan.
Thank you. That was great time.
Congratulations. That's, that's really amazing. You, you know, especially for the senior community. I think it's a, it's a very important piece. Anybody who can link up and create those connections. So congratulations, Ryan. And I'm glad, I'm glad that you've gotten recognized for your efforts, right? Because many times, you, you know, kids, you guys are at the high school doing such great things, but to receive some recognition is well deserved. So congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, board committee, board member now, remarks. I wonder, do we have any board member remarks? Who wants to start? Okay, let's move on then. Mr. De Silva, you gonna kick us off?
Yes, I'll kick it off soon.
Okay.
So after three years, we finally got you broken in, and you're leaving us.
It's been four, but who's him?
Well, clearly not me, right? Time flies. So I'm looking forward to, to working with Mr. Hughes, but your presence here is certainly gonna be missed. One of the things that I appreciate most about you is your ability to take feedback, your accessibility to the community to start with, and then your ability to take the information that people give to you and, and ideas and feedback and turn that into something actionable. And, you know, a great example of that is, is what you talked about a couple of minutes ago is the Transportation Committee meeting. That's something that you advocated for. And, you know, we looked at it and we said, you know what, okay, let's, you know, we should, we should jump on it. And we're, you know, we're not that many meetings into it and there's some really important productive things coming out of that committee. So that's, you know, just, just an example of, of one of the, one of the things that I, I truly appreciate about you. So thank you for being a good model for the other board members, right? And just generally for our community, a, a model community member. Definitely a valued person. And I'm absolutely looking forward to seeing you make out in the next role. And thank you for the time that you've, you've invested in this organization. And we look forward to the things that you're gonna do in the future.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva.
Brett, you're so motivated. You're so enthusiastic.
Ms. Sacco, maybe just take the mic, only because it's being videoed and...
You're so motivated and enthusiastic. You care about the children in our town. You care about our town. And I think you've been an asset on the board, and I will truly miss working with you. Thank you for all you've done.
Brett, your superpower has been your connection to the community and your advocacy for their needs and concerns. And your community corner, your community profiles every, every meeting, and all the work that you do behind the scenes to connect the community to our administration, to our schools, all the work that you do for our HSOs, sports boosters, is all attributed to your generosity of spirit and your true commitment to our students, to the community. As, as Ms. Sacco had said, you will be truly, truly missed. Transportation Committee, I had sort of low expectations, but it has been a, a very, very valuable use of our time. It will give us very valuable input to how we look at transportation going forward. And, and that's just the tip of the iceberg of the things that you've contributed to as a member of the board. I will certainly miss you. I know all of us have expressed some regret in your departure. But I know that there are great things ahead of you in our town and, and maybe larger things. But it has been a pleasure working with you. You are an individual with tremendous integrity, with tremendous intelligence, and real heart for our students. And that is what's among the hallmarks of a great board member. And you have been a great board member, and you are a great board member. Thank you.
So for anyone who doesn't know, Brett was one of the original reasons I ran for the board. He sat me down and basically said, you've been talking about it forever, so like either do it or stop talking about it. And Brett was also the person who sat me down when I decided to run to tell me, you know, it is a lot of work. Like, these are the responsibilities. And it takes a special person to have both of those conversations. and it takes a special person to have both of those conversations within three months of each other. You should definitely do it, but then are you sure that you want to? I have spent the last year kind of quietly observing everything that happens on the Board and trying to kind of find my place here. Like, what is my role among the nine of us? And so much of what I do and how I feel about this, I model after what Brett has done. You are a wonderful role model and a wonderful friend. We run in the same bone tier circles, so I will see you in like two weeks. I am looking forward to having more time to bother you about other things now. Like, I'm about to get real annoying about TMYSB stuff and HSO, and this is hard because I value your input. It is hard to find somebody who really cares as much as you do. You exemplify being able to make decisions that are best for a community and student without your own thought or your own belief put into it, and that is something that you don't often find. I'm looking forward to the new year. I think, you know, new voices, new perspective are all really good things, but this one is tough. So thank you for everything, and I feel like we're at a funeral. Like, it's okay, like, we're going to see you. It's good, but it's, it's going to be hard.
Oh, Brett, so in addition to what everyone else was saying, I, I am really going to miss your, your Community Corner. And, and I do think it's going to be different, you know, when someone else does it. Like, we need your wacky facts in there, so whoever takes over that next, hopefully will do that. Thank you for your friendship outside of the Board, in addition to, you know, everything that everyone else has said. And, you know, I think Mawa should probably clone you. And so if you're willing to submit yourself to some scientific experimentation, maybe we'll get some other Coplins out there, you can do even more, but...
We don't need that.
So thank you, thank you for your friendship outside and as well as...
Thanks, man.
Last but not least, Brett.
Oh, no, no, I'm last.
Oh, that's right. I've got about a story pretty much.
I'm just kidding.
Your dedication and the amount of effort and time that you spend doing this job has definitely been something that we're all very grateful for, especially, you know, the, when you came to the policy meetings, you were always prepared. Whatever the rest of us didn't catch, you always caught. So that's going to be truly missed. You completely revamped the Community Relations Committee. So that's going to have a lasting effect, I think. So there's going to be that legacy that you're going to leave behind, which is something that you should be definitely proud of. You're going to be missed. I'm not going to say goodbye because I'm going to see you again out and about, so it'll be just so long.
Thank you all. So, Mr. Copland, let's see. From day one, I knew we would not only be Board Members but friends. I remember going out with you for a drink, and we just engaged on a, on a different level. Your persistence, inquisitiveness, and dedication to the Mawa schoolchildren is truly impressive. It's something that everyone has spoken about. I'm going to miss your endless questions, Mr. Copland, helping me to formulate the questions I should be asking, because I didn't even think of the question. And then Mr. Copland will say, Prima, do we think of this? And Prima, do we think of that? And so I'm hopeful that, you know, you will continue to be in my ear with questions, and I know you will be. The other thing I will miss are the phone calls. I could kind of time them based on when Dr. Dettoro would send an email. So it was kind of like a little running, you know, kind of bet in my house. Who would call first on the Board and what time? And I think there was once, it was within about a five-minute span, and my first call was Mr. Copland. And again, I looked forward to those calls because, again, you would help me to figure out the questions, what to ask, and you always thought of it from every angle. So I know that the questions will keep coming, and I look forward to that. And now you're a citizen, so you can really ask the questions, and you can put more information out there perhaps. So again, I know you'll be there as our support and supporting us along the way. Your Community Corner sort of highlights who you are. It, it, it has become very symbolic of you, Mr. Copland, Brett, because you are this community. I, I, I thought I was involved when I lived in Mawa. You have like blown out your involvement on so many different levels. You really epitomize and really love this community, and that comes through in everything you do, from HSO to TMYSB to being on the Board. And I, I don't know that enough people appreciate all that you do and the fact that you truly do it for the love of this community and the children in this community. Lastly, I'm glad to say that our time has definitely turned into a friendship. And for me, this is not goodbye, but just see you later. Thanks again for everything, really appreciate it. And we will welcome Mr. Hughes next time. This was our, more of our sort of goodbye for you because at reorg, people may not realize, but during the reorganization meeting, it's sort of like no one's on the Board and then the new people get appointed again. So this is why we're saying a few words to Mr. Copland because at that time, we will be then swearing in the new members of the Board. So again, thank you again, Mr. Copland.
First of all...
You weren't invited, Steve.
Oh, sorry.
He's still a Board Member.
Yeah. No, they don't want to clone me, trust me. That's my wife. But I appreciate the sentiment. I'm going to try to keep this short. I just want to say thank you. I think that's, that's where I'm at right now. I want to thank my family for all their support, their flexibility, their love, their understanding. I don't think you realize the, I don't say pressure, but the pressure that families are put on when you volunteer for a role like this. I think it's underestimated when, when you come on. You really don't understand unless you're sitting in the seat. So for their support, I'm endlessly grateful for. Thank you to our community for allowing me to do this. You know, call it what it is. We are an elected official, and it's up to our community to put us here. And back to what Dr. Dettoro said, volunteer in schools, raise your hand, get involved. I'm always going to, I'm going to keep pushing that. I promise you, you will never regret doing it, so please get involved. Thank you to our administration. When I got on the Board four years ago, it was eye-opening to see the amount of work, to see the amount of passion, to see the amount of love that this group of people have for our district. Don't stop. Don't stop what you're doing, and always keep in, in mind why you're doing it. It's for the children of this, of this community. I am so proud of what we have here from an administration and staff standpoint. I truly believe that we, we have the best and most dedicated group of teaching professionals in, in the state. And just don't stop what you're doing because we're doing really, really good stuff here. And last but not least, to all of you, thank you for your sentiments. Thank you for your kind words, and I will lump Tim Leslie and Peter into this thank you as well because they've had an impact on me as well. It's amazing to see what nine passionate, community-centric, respectful, smart people can do. When you're working together, we're not always in agreement, as it should be. We're not like-minded like some of the community may think we are. But we are respectful, we are able to come together for the better, for the betterment of these children. And that's what it is. We are here, every single person on this, at this table, including Mr. Kazinsky, is here for one reason and one reason only, and that's, that's for the, that's for the kids. So please don't ever forget that. You know, I, I wrote some, a bunch of other notes, but honestly, it's just, it's just thank you. As everyone's mentioned, I'm not going anywhere. You know, my, my son's in sixth grade, so, you know, I'm around. I'm not, not hiding under a rock somewhere and, you know, not going to be involved. There's, there's things in my future that'll be coming up, and take my talents somewhere. Not sure where, but feel like LeBron James, but... But again, thank you. Thank you for everyone, thank you for everything that, that you guys do, and just continue the good work that we're doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Brett. Brett, we do have a card for you that circulates. It hasn't gone all the way around her. So we do, we, on behalf of the Board...
Get Mr. Johnson so he can say something.
On behalf of the Board, we also have a small gift for you, a little token of our appreciation as well.
They passed this card.
Here you go, Johnny, sign it.
What did he say?
Oh, okay, okay, we'll think about it. Don't want you to think you're going empty-handed. All right, now, let's, let's move on to old business. Our minutes from our December 1st meeting, and we have minutes from the December 7th meeting. So we have a motion for old business, Mr. Gallo, and second by Dr. Park. Mr. Bleeker?
Ms. Daveniera.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sico?
Yes.
Mr. Copland?
Yes.
And Dr. Worthy?
Yes. All right, new business, other, we have A through S. Am I incorrect? All right, do you have a motion, please, on new business A through S? Ms. Sico, and second by Mr. Gallo. All right, thank you. Do we have any questions, any discussion? Ready to take our vote? Okay. She has something, Dr. Park? No, okay. Mr. Bleeker?
Ms. Daveniera.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except on 17A, I am abstaining from check number 109441.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sico?
Yes.
Mr. Copland?
Yes, and I'm abstaining on 17A, check number 109551.
And Dr. Worthy?
Yes. All right, now, let's take new business personnel, 18A through H. Do you have a motion? Mr. Denise, and a second by Mr. Copland. All right, any questions? All right, Mr. Bleeker?
Ms. Daveniera.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Since this is the last meeting, I'm going to let him have it.
I was waiting for that, actually. Definitely, you're sweeping.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sico?
Yes.
And Mr. Copland?
Yes, and thank you to all the volunteers on the agenda.
Dr. Worthy?
Yes. All right, we move on to public questions and comments. Public participation at Board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva. Okay, we are open to the public. A little surprised to see you here, Mr. May, but nice to see you.
Oh, thank you. Design, design. Yeah, I sped my meeting up so I can get here.
Yeah.
First, I just wanted to report back, you know, we had conversations with the superintendent about ways the town could work more with the schools and vice versa. And we're doing that. Most recently, myself and two other council members went to the high school, spoke to a class, and they were able to ask us questions about the governmental process and running for office and that kind of stuff. And then we are still working on scheduling, having the students come to, to a council meeting to shadow us and actually run the meeting. Have to, we'll have to find a, a quiet meeting for them to do that. And then I think there's going to be continuous ways to, to work together. So I just wanted to give an update on that and wanted to thank you. Also, I wanted to address Brett. You know, I'm probably one of your biggest fans. And, you know, I know when you, when you were first running for the Board, you were probably one of the, the most qualified people to run for the position, and I think you've proven that over your time on the Board. The, you know, the, you, you did it for the right reasons, which is all we all ask in, in all of our positions. Do it for the right reason, and what's that reason? For the best of Mawa. And, you know, you do that with the Sports Boosters, you've done, you did that with soccer. Anything, anything you're involved in, it's always for the right reason. You know, that's why, like was mentioned earlier, transportation, Community Corner, it's, it's, it's to do the right thing by Mawa. And just want to let you know, it's appreciated by me, and I hope it's appreciated by the rest of the town. And best of luck. I have some plans for you, but that's all I have. Have a good night.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Mr. May. Okay, I see no one else coming forward. Motion to close the meeting to the public, Mr. Copland, second by Mr. Gallo. We will not require an executive session at the end, so I need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Copland, thank you very much, and Mr. De Silva. We are adjourned. Happy holidays to all and Happy New Year. See you next year.